Good evening, we're going to call this meeting to order and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go. All right, what have we got here?
So can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Christie.
Present.
Deacon.
Here.
Gava.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Carmelo.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
And Watson.
Here.
And then can we have an approval for the minutes of the meetings for April 16th, April 8th, April 2nd, and March 19th?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes for every one month.
Who's second and all in favor of approving those minutes is unanimous. Thank you. So petitions and communications this evening.
Yes, we have MSAD six budget presentation.
So Superintendent Gleason, thank you for coming.
Do not move it. Is there a sign that says do not move this?
You're a good team, ho.
Good evening, Clay Gleason Superintendent, Bonn Eagle School District. With me who will come to the podium later is Dawn Poole, our business manager. And one thing I just want to note is this is our second year building budget together and I think you'll see some changes in this presentation from past years and some of the feedback that we've received, we've tried to implement. One of the things I'll mention at the top is I remember having a comment from Mr. Carmelo actually about having more communication in advance with the town and that was a fair point to make and so this year Tasha and I have connected several times leading up to this process. We've tried to keep her informed of challenges we're facing and kind of what to expect and actually think the budget that we're bringing in is lower than what we had anticipated when we'd had some of our meetings. So trying to continue to kind of evolve and improve. Another thing that we're doing different this year that we hadn't done in the past is a one-page sheet I passed out that has some academics. I wouldn't call them exactly highlights, but they're realities and acknowledgements and I just want to kind of reference those before we get into the numbers. The side with the blue bar graph on it, that first chart is a snapshot of reading scores of fifth graders over time. And it's pretty representative of what we're seeing in our schools. People will say, well, our kids, you know, they don't do well on the state test, their reading scores aren't good. When the schools closed in 2020, it had a profound effect on our students. And what this fifth grade group can show you with their proficiency in reading is that they have made steady gains to recover some of those losses. So while we are not scoring high on state measures, there are signs of improvement and I think it's a matter of continuing to do the work to get kids where they need to be. So this is, that's just one snapshot of one grade level, but I think it's pretty representative of other grade levels in reading. The second chart is math. That is the state tested math and it's each grade for this particular year. I actually think this might be 23, 24's data, but it shows a trend. So the dark line is the state average score, which you can see statewide. Kind of trends down into seventh grade and then trends back up into high school and Bonn Eagle sort of mirrors that trend, but the gap does get wider in middle school. So we've done some analysis on this of what's causing this and one of the things we did two years ago is implement a new math program because we felt like those declining scores in middle school were because kids were coming in with different experiences in our five different elementary schools. So they didn't have common language, they didn't have common experiences and that's what the sixth grade teachers were telling us. So we're trying to be responsive to that, kind of tighten up the math curriculum. It will take a couple of years for us to see if that's working because you can see by 10th grade, they've closed the gap down almost even to the state average. So we recognize that math is a concern and there's a lot of work we're doing to try to correct that. The one highlight I'd like to point out is that last chart on the front page is our graduation rate for the class of 2024 was 87.8, which is the highest in years. And there's a lot of reasons why, but that's actually higher than the state average. So we have a lot of ways we support kids to keep them from dropping out, to get them across the finish line to graduation. We've integrated credit, we have alternative programs, our alternative program is recognized across the state for the work that they do. And I think you just go talk to some of the kids that are in the program and they will tell you that it's really something that has made a difference for them. Our interventions, our IEP transition programs for kids with special needs and then after-school recovery. So there's a lot of work and resources that have gone into getting that graduation right there and we hope to maintain that. The back page is all about science and there's a trend here that I'll just quickly outline in elementary schools. There's a lot of information here, but basically it shows that we're below significantly on the fifth grade science test. There's no great mystery. We don't teach a lot of science right now in elementary school because we're teaching so much math and literacy. So if we don't expose kids to the content, they're not going to do well on a measure. In middle school, that gap shrinks significantly and the middle school is pretty close to being right on the state average in science because that's, they've had three years of it being, you know, a discipline of its own. And then in the high school, we saw that the scores were dropping again and we've analyzed this, what could, what could this be? What makes a difference? And part of it was our schedule structure, being on trimesters, kids weren't getting the content to take the test, so they didn't have the material they needed to do better. That's one of the, one of the theories that we have. So one of the things the high school's done is change back to, well, it's been a while, but they've changed to a semester structure and all the science classes will be year-long moving forward. So we hope that will help make a difference on those high school scores. For the elementary, one of the things we're trying to figure out is how do we get more science to our elementary kids? So I want to acknowledge that because sometimes I feel like people say, oh, you don't, you don't talk about the numbers, you don't talk about the data, you don't talk about the work in the schools. We have a lot of people working hard, doing a lot of things, trying to respond to the data and improve. So that's a quick academic snapshot. There isn't a slide for this, but I'm just going to talk about staffing because one of the things that Dawn and I have taken a deep dive into this year is enrollment and staffing and the relationship. Because again, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I was new to this for the last couple of years, Dawn's really in her second year and we listened last year when people said, how come you have more staff and less kids over the last 10 years? It's a fair question, right? And I can explain some of that. We've added some services, but it doesn't explain all of it. So we really have, have looked into that. We have 292 teachers and 700 employees as of the spring. So we started looking at each position as it, if we had a retirement or a resignation, we looked at whether we needed that position before we filled it this year. And maybe this is a good time to, in the bigger packet, the first page behind the cover talks about enrollment. So we're looking at our staffing and trying to responsibly reduce it, right? We're not, we don't want to destabilize the district by laying off 20 people. But as, as positions open up, like I said, can, do we need it? Do we need to fill it? So we guide, use our enrollment as a guide. So you can see the, this is the 25, 26 projected enrollment for elementary schools across the district, so not current. This, this is three teachers less than last year. So we reduced by three at the elementary and I think you can see that there has been minimal impact on our class sizes by doing that. So that was three positions we could take out of the budget, which is, you know, perpetual savings, not just a one-time savings. And even there, our overall district average is still like 16 and a half in any particular classroom. One of the challenges we face is kids are not all on one site. So you've got some small classes here, but they're, they're kind of too big to split it, to have one class, but kind of small if you have two. If you look at sort of Buxton Centers model, there's a lot more flexibility for the principal to move things around and have consistent class sizes. So that's something we're looking at, you know, I think you all know, we have applied, done applications for construction projects. I don't, I didn't come here to present about that tonight. We won't really know until late June whether we have any success with that. But one way or the other, we'll have to make plans on how we can be more efficient with our, with our enrollment, with our staffing. Middle school has been staying pretty consistent. The class size in for a clan home room is about 20 and that's going to be the same for next year. The high school is where we've had significant, well, it's catching up. Our district has gone down about 300 students in 10 years and it's just now sort of catching up with the high school. So this, this month, the enrollment is 995 and it's the lowest that anyone can remember it being, like even people who went here. If any of you went to Bonn Eagle and you think back, it was always a really big high school. The good news is the trend coming is that it's going to stay pretty much right there. Next year it'll go back to 1,000 and we anticipate that's about where it's going to hold for a while. I know we, and you hear a lot about the new building projects, especially in Standish, but we have not seen an influx of kids yet. And I have my own theory about that, about people not being able to sell their homes. So kids, you know, families like mine whose kids have graduated, they're staying put and then the new homes are being filled by replacement students, but it's not, it's not overcrowding our schools yet. So our facilities right now, it's not a crowding problem as much as a quality of the facility problem that we run into. So those are kind of the numbers. We also were able to cut three positions from the high school with this new schedule structure. It allowed them to be more efficient with class requests, with less, less students. So there are six total positions that have been removed from this budget. And I, and I think that still leaves us in a good place. The departmental average, so for an average math or social studies class, it's 15 to 18 students. So right now we're in pretty good shape there, probably even some more room to work with in the future. And those were all done through attrition. So either retirement or resignation and non-renewal, a lack of interest in a course or something like that. Let's see, what else? I think it's almost time for Dawn. I just want to make sure. Then the other thing I want to mention before I turn it over to Dawn is another thing we heard last year from the public is, why are you asking for more when you have this carryforward and fund balance of $12 million? And you have capital reserve accounts and you're asking us for more money when you haven't spent the money we gave you? And that's a complicated answer, but there's, there's something to that that we want, we're listening to. So a couple of things we're doing this year. The capital reserve for facilities was growing because that's all money that was allocated for capital projects that couldn't get done. So they, they go into, from Article nine in our budget and they go into an account and they're, they can be used to catch up with projects or emergencies, but the board has to approve those. So that account was getting up to $2.7 million. So we had a bunch of safety issues that we wanted to do and rather than add them on to the budget or raise new funds, we're taking, the board approved $671,000 to replace intercoms in the schools. To make sure the entrances are more secure if a door wasn't working properly, alarm panels. So there's a number of things that are expensive items that are being done through that capital reserve account rather than asking for more from taxpayers. The other thing is the fund balance I mentioned and I, you know, I'm sure the folks in this room understand the complexities of this. We have a large budget, a large organization. We don't want to have to be taking loans to meet payroll if our revenue doesn't come in. So keeping enough capital reserve to be able to make payroll is important. There was inconsistencies during COVID on our fund balance and it actually went up and up and it was hard to pin it down, but Dawn has done an excellent job this year of trying to budget more precisely in our budget and try to really just predict. The, the revenues have become more consistent, I think, is what the well say it, and less, less uneven. So we're, we're going to use, we're using four and a half million from our fund balance in this budget. I think it was actually 10 million to start. So depending on how much we end up using in the actuals and everything, we, we could be left with between six and eight million for next year. So it's something though that we're trying to wean off from because over reliance on fund balance creates a problem because if you can't, if you can't keep up with it, then you're going to have to raise more money from taxpayers. So we're going to start next year with no fund, like going to start by not adding anything from the fund balance to our budget, see what the numbers are and then bring some in as we think we need to, to lower the overall dollar values. But it's definitely something that's on our mind and again, money we've already raised from taxpayers and using some of that before we go out and ask for more. So tonight, we're going to quickly go through the 11 articles and then the two adult ed and school nutrition that are voted on separately. Dawn is very efficient. This is our fourth time doing it, so she's going to just whip right through and one of the themes you're going to see is the 12% health insurance increase for the second year in a row. Which added $2 million over two years to our bottom line budget because we're 80% people. It's a very big hit for us to have increases of that extent. So here's Dawn for the article by article.
Thank you. Hi Dawn. Hi. So you'll see on page three of the packet, it just shows you our budget history. There's 10 years there for you, shows our overall increases. One year we had a decrease in the percentages. So page three is our local general fund budget. Page four is our food service and adult ed. Again, history over the last 10 years shows you what we've been doing.
Can I ask a question? You want me to wait till the end? Like the food service has gone up 240,000 this year, 25, 20%. What's driving that? I mean, you went from 784 salary to a million 23.
Well, I think you'll see your answer will come up. We have a slide for each article and it answers that question. So if you don't have an answer by the time we're done, we'll come back to it. Okay?
Page five is the proposed FY '26 budget, shows it by article, which is the format that the state requires. The overall general fund increase is 3.93%. The adult ed is a .67 decrease. And the nutrition service is an 11.23% increase. That overall equates to a 4.17% increase. The next page shows our revenues. The anticipated revenues, which leads to the assessment to the towns. So even though the proposed increase is a 4.17% overall, the assessment to the towns is a 3.77%. And that's, that's an average. So each town may be a little bit different. You can see Standish happens to be 4.04 and that. The amounts that we have to assess to the towns is dictated from the state. So we get our ED 279 report, which shows all the valuations and that's how we have to break down the assessments. Now I'll get into the individual articles. Article one in our budget is regular instruction and that's our instructional programs pre-K through grade 12. Our alternative education programs, English language programs and gifted and talented programs. You can see that the difference in Article one is .67%. Or a difference of $171,000. The drivers, major drivers for Article one were salaries and benefits. There was an increase of $384,491. The contracted average salary increase for the folks that are paid through Article one was 4.3%. We cut six positions due to attrition and non-renewals. And we had a health insurance increase of 12.7%. Our non-labor, we actually decreased $213,000. We cut contingency by 150,000 and we had a lease that was originally in Article one for our technology department. But it was not related to one-to-one devices for the students, so we moved that to Article five where it belonged. So 65,000 was moved to Article five. Article two is our special ed programs. This is the special ed administration, resource rooms, self-contained, homebound and hospital tutoring. And our services like social work, health, psych, speech and audiology, occupational therapy and physical therapy. Here we have an increase of 7.55% or $907,735. The big drivers here were salaries and benefits of $765,000. The contracted average salary increase for the employees that are paid out of Article two is 6.56%. And we were hit with that big health insurance increase of 12.7%. We had to increase our non-labor $142,000 and we added tuition payments to outside. Services of $30,000. We had to increase staff travel for in-district because we have a lot of our special ed staff that is itinerant, they go from school to school. So we put $20,000 in there for that and we added contingency of $100,000. And just in case we have an out-of-district placement, those can be super expensive. One placement can far exceed that $100,000. So we feel we need that in there. Article three is our career and technical education. We have $10,000 in there for an emergency and it is. Right now the funding for career and tech ed schools goes directly from the state to these schools. If however, we should get some kind of bill from one of these schools for one of our students, they need some sort of device or something that they can't afford, we have this money in there for that. Article four is other instruction and this includes co-curricular activities like student government, band, choir, clubs, honor societies. Our extracurricular activities, which is our athletics and our non-special ed summer school. Here we had a decrease of 3.98% or $48,000. The salaries, the major drivers were salaries and benefits. There was a decrease of $105,000. The contracted salary increase for the employees that are paid in Article four was 3.21%. And I cleaned up the stipend positions. And I cleaned up the stipend positions to align with our actual expenses. I cut a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, we looked at every stipend that we pay, um, how much we pay, and for some reason, the budget had just been inflated. So, we cut to what we actually need there. Non-labor was an increase of fifty-seven thousand dollars. Here, we had increased purchase services. Um, we have to pay our game officials when they come and officiate the games. Um, that's eighteen thousand dollars. Increased supplies of twenty-five thousand dollars, and we increased our transportation costs of twenty thousand dollars. Article five is student and staff support. This includes our social work, our guidance counselors and offices, the, um, health and nurses, the library, curriculum, and instructional technology. Here, we have an increase of ten point one five percent or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The major drivers here in this article were salaries and benefits of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. The contracted average salary increase for the folks that are paid out of Article five was six point eight nine percent, and our health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. We increased our non-labor of two, for, of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. And when looking at our actual expenses and what was in there, um, our technology director has done a great job at making do with what he had, but, but I found that there was a lot of items that just were unfunded, not budgeted. And he had been using, and he's still going to, but he had been using, um, his, at the end of the year, we sell back a lot of our devices to Second Life Mac, and he has been using that to fund some of the initiatives that he had. But it's just, it's not sustainable. So, we increased non-labor two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, and this included cyber insurance for fifteen thousand dollars, our firewall hardware and endpoint protection of sixty thousand dollars, software and maintenance repair of ninety-five thousand dollars. That tech lease that I talked about in Article one, that was moved to Article five of sixty-five thousand dollars. And then, we had, um, eighteen thousand dollars in Article eleven that was for software renewal. That also should be in Article five, so that was moved here. And some supplies that were moved from Article seven to here of twenty thousand dollars. Article six is system administration, and that's our superintendent's office, the school board, and the business office. Here, we have an increase of four point seven five percent or seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. The drivers here are salaries and benefits. The increase was seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. The contracted average salary increase for the employees that are paid through Article six was five point seven eight percent, and that lovely health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. And there was basically no change in non-labor. There was an increase of two hundred and fifty-three dollars, and we just moved things around within the article. Article seven is school administration, and this is the principals' offices and the school offices. Here, we have an increase of four point two three percent or a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The major drivers were salary and benefits of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The contracted average salary increase for the employees paid out of Article seven is six point one four percent, and the health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. Here, we decreased non-labor by nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And what we found when we did a deep dive into the budget was they were, the principals were putting a lot of their expenses for supplies and instructional services here that really should have belonged to guidance and library. So, we had to move that to the correct article. Article eight is transportation. There, we see an increase of one point zero one percent or forty-nine thousand dollars. The drivers here, salaries and benefits, were a reduction of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The average contracted salary increase is two point one eight percent for the employees that work, that are paid out of Article eight. This average is, is lower than a lot of the other averages in the other articles, and that's because two years ago, they, um, renegotiated, and they saw a hefty increase. So, this is just leveling them out. We have the health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. And we also had an, um, mechanic position in that budget that hadn't been, hadn't been able to fill it for several years. And after looking at industry standards and how many mechanics you need for the bus fleet that you have, we were able to cut that position out, and they will manage just fine with the staffing that they have. We increased non-labor eighty thousand dollars, and that was purchased professional services. Um, that's stuff we cannot do in-house of fifteen thousand dollars. And our transportation software, which had previously been paid by the state for many, many years, the state paid for that. They're not doing it anymore. So, we are purchasing a software. It's sixty-five thousand dollars. The name of the software is Bus Right. And we're very excited about that because it has, um, an app for parents. They'll be able to track the buses and see where it is on their route. Hopefully, you know, feel good about where their kids are and when they'll be home and be able to track it much better. Um, June second, Bus Right will be at our school board meeting doing a little presentation. If you or any of your community members would like to, to attend, we'd love to have you. Article nine is our facilities and maintenance. That includes all our buildings, grounds, equipment, security, and safety. Here, we have an increase of ten point nine three percent or eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The drivers here were salaries and benefits. It was an increase of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The contracted average salary increase for the employees paid through Article nine is four point two two percent. The health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. And here, we have a non-labor increase of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Again, we have a, a new facilities director, and he played a, a big role in making this budget, and he looked at his, the actual expenses that he needed to run his department, and we found that a lot of things were not, not in the budget. So, we increased it accordingly. They include things like purchased professional services, ninety thousand dollars. Purchased property services, repairs on the buildings and grounds and vehicles of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Again, this is stuff that we cannot do in-house. We have an EEI project. Um, this is a twenty-year lease. The overall cost is about two point eight million dollars, and this is to redo the lighting in four schools that we know we're definitely keeping. So, Jack Memorial, Buxton Center, uh, the middle school and the high school, and it will do the LED lighting and hopefully save us some money on our electricity costs. But we're also gonna revamp the Jack Memorial School, which is the technology hub for our district. The boiler is forty years old. The HVAC is, eh, don't even know. We just need some major renovations done to that building in order to keep it stable and running, for it to keep the district running. So, as I said, the total cost was two point eight million. This two hundred and ten is an annual payment for the next twenty years. We increased our supplies for grounds, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Supplies for custodial equipment, eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, regular maintenance supplies, thirty thousand dollars, and our energy for electricity, propane, and oil, forty-one thousand dollars. We need some equipment for custodial and grounds is thirty thousand dollars. Um, we have a, an existing lease that we have to, an additional twenty-one thousand dollars, and we decreased our contingency amount seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, we had, um, an original contingency amount of three hundred and seventy-five. Uh, we reduced it to three hundred. And as Clay was talking about, we have a healthy capital reserve fund with two point seven. We're gonna be using approximately seven hundred thousand of that. It still leaves us with two million in our capital reserve, so we're comfortable with reducing that contingency. Article ten is debt service, and this is for our capital construction bonds, which is Buxton Center Elementary School. There is a difference of twelve point nine two percent, a decrease, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And that is, um, interest expense decrease due to the principal payment and bond refinancing. Article eleven is all other expenses, and reduced, we reduced that to zero. And as I said earlier, the only thing we were paying out of Article eleven was, um, a software expense that belongs in Article five. So, we moved it where it should go. Our adult ed program includes our adult transitions, our literacy program, our workforce training, our high school completion, and, um, adult ed enrichment programs. Here, we have a decrease of point six seven percent or two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. The major drivers here, salaries and benefits, were a decrease of twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. The average salary increase for the employees paid through the adult ed fund were six point nine seven percent. We had the health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. And we had two positions that were being held in the adult ed fund that, um, after discussing with the adult ed director, she hasn't been able to fill them, and she feels she can manage without them. So, these, the workforce coordinator position was cut, and the part-time evening clerical position was cut. Um, we did, I did notice when looking at the actual expenses for the adult ed enrichment program that, um, we weren't budgeting enough there, so it had to increase by seven thousand dollars. We also increased non-labor nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, and that's due to some iPads and supplies of sixty-three hundred dollars, and some textbooks for the CNA class and English language learners, uh, thirty-four hundred dollars. And finally, our nutrition services. We serve breakfast and lunch to any student who wants it. Um, here, we have an increase of eleven point two three percent. The difference is two hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. The major drivers here, salaries and benefits, thirty-nine thousand, forty dollars. The contracted average salary increase for the folks that are paid out of the nutrition fund is three point four six percent. We were hit with a health insurance increase of twelve point seven percent. And we had to increase our non-labor, uh, uh, hearty amount, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. And that is for food and non-food supplies, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and equipment for our grab and cool, grab and go cooler that we need of ten thousand dollars. And that's the budget in a nutshell. I'll let Clay take it back over. Thank you.
So, Mr. Pomelo, I'm sorry you had to wait till the end, but it, food, the, the largest part of that increase is the food costs a lot more.
This says salaries, not food.
Well, it's both. Some of it's salaries, some of it's food.
It was two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Two hundred and forty thousand. That's nothing to do with food, right?
Um, well, it's both, both. So, so here's what I'll say about salaries. If we want to talk about salaries.
I'm just saying it went up two hundred, uh, three thousand in one year, and you have less students to feed, and I just.
Yeah, we have less people serving them too. That's an area where our staffing has.
Two hundred and fifty thousand salaries, David, less people.
So, if we want anyone to work in our schools, we have to pay a competitive wage, and three years ago, we couldn't get anybody to work for us. So, now, we are not having that problem. So, I hear you, but I think it's a necessary evil of doing business to pay a competitive wage with the surrounding area. We are not the highest paying district in any area right now. So.
It took up two hundred and fifty thousand in one year, though. You're talking from so, I, I wish I, I don't have my numbers. It's seven eighty-four to a million twenty-three. Someone got a, so, what type of increase did you give them? Twenty, thirty percent?
Which year?
The average, the average increase for the people is three point four six percent.
It's thirty-nine.
Three point four of, of seven hundred and, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand was.
Which, which article are you talking about?
I'm looking at the food salaries. They've gone up two hundred and forty thousand dollars in one year.
No.
The salaries for the.
Maybe I'm reading it wrong. I'm on.
I think you are.
I'm on page four. It says salaries. It says tw- year twenty-four, seven eighty-four for twenty-five, one million, twenty-three thousand. Am I not reading that right? Anybody else see that number? FY twenty-four, the salaries were seven eighty-four. FY twenty-five, they were one million, twenty-three thousand.
That was last year's budget, so FY twenty-four.
Yeah.
And FY twenty-five is the current year we're in.
Yes.
And yes, there was a big increase because they were severely underpaid. They, they could go anywhere and get, eh, they could go to McDonald's and make more money. They could go. We just, we, we couldn't keep them. So, yes, they had a big increase. That's what they, they negotiated.
It's a twenty percent increase in salary, roughly.
Yeah, that was last year, though. Last year to current.
What's this year?
This year.
Three point four six.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
Where's the three? It doesn't show twenty, FY twenty-six.
Page.
Page eleven.
Page eleven.
Okay.
There, it's all broken down.
Bottom of page eleven.
Thirty-nine thousand is the salaries and benefits increase.
I'm fine. You guys, you guys got all the answers. I got one more question.
Okay.
Unfunded needs is, uh, on the back page.
Yep.
Twelve. Uh, track service, two fifty. Parking lot, two fifty. Playground, two fifty. I'm, I'm amazed that everything comes in at two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, with our budget, if we do something, we might be, you know, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, one forty-one. It's just, everything seems to be at two fifty. So, that's just a number you, you put in there, a placeholder.
Which I was getting to, is that that's, those are things that are not in this budget, right? Unfunded means we didn't ask for them in this budget. Those are estimates and placeholders. We don't have bids or specifics. They are not, that's why it says unfunded needs.
Okay.
Right. Things that are not included in the budget that we need, the district needs, but we did not ask for them in this budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's an, I want to be clear. That's an additional resource officer. We're very happy with the resource officer we have. He's answered over four hundred calls, I think, in the last year. We also have called Buxton over fifty times, I want to say. And in a district our size, we could really use another resource officer, but the board felt like it wasn't the time to add it. So, that's ninety-three thousand we're not asking for in this budget. A couple of special ed positions for services for kids. John?
Is he, um, the resource officer that we have, does that cover in our high school and the middle school, or does Buxton cover our middle school?
We have a mutual aid agreement in the contract, and so he is our resource officer, and Buxton, Buxton asks us to call him first whenever possible. They will largely respond to the Learning Center and Evolve, which is in Buxton near the Buxton Center School. So, often, they will be called there because it's often more urgent, because there's some high-needs kids in those settings. But usually, it's, it's our SRO that's responding to the middle school, the high school. He tries to help with the traffic mess at Edna Libby whenever he can. He goes over to Hollis sometimes if they have a question. So, he's trying to cover the whole.
It's just Cumberland County, right?
Uh, he's a Cumberland County officer. Yep. And he is, he is definitely working in York County as well. The track resurfacing is an estimate, as Mr. Pomelo pointed out, and it's expensive. It's gonna be more expensive to replace the track if that track falls apart. If you go to a football game right now and you have accessibility, you need, you have, in a wheelchair or something, you would need to sit on the visitor's side. There's no accessible seating on the home side. Irrigation is poor. It's kind of half on some fields. It's an issue if, if we want the fields to stay well-done. Our parking lots, we have a lot of parking lots, and so, to your point, two hundred and fifty is kind of a placeholder. And we would, if we had that money, we would do what we could to get our, our parking lots resealed and resurfaced. That, that wouldn't cover everything. That would be like, we'd do a bunch, and then we, we would maybe do more the next year. Our, our playgrounds are all failing. The playgrounds themselves are fine. The equipment is failing. It's old. It sits out in the sun. So, what we're doing is trying to fix the swings, um, have equipment for the kids to play with, and we, we just can't afford these hu, very expensive structures on the playgrounds. And then, there's a grounds position that we had considered asking for. We have a lot of fields. We have our plumber and our electrician mowing in the summer and taking him away from work orders. We could use somebody to just kind of mow full-time in the summer and, and then plow in the winter, but it's just not the time to add it. So, that whole page are things that are not in the budget. We have not asked for them, but just felt the community needs to see what some of those needs are. Couple just highlights, and then, you know, jump in anytime you have questions. Cutting seven total positions in this budget. Um, we're gonna continue to look at those in future budgets that may not be the end. Article one, which we have the most control over, which is almost one-third of our budget, is almost flat this year. The arti, the area, the articles with the higher increases, special ed, it's a lot. Special ed's expensive. We have a higher special ed population than most schools. The state average is fourteen. We have twenty-one percent in our district special ed population. We can't say no when families move in, and we have to provide services. We have our, basically, our own day treatment program in district that we pay for. If those students that attend that program went to out-of-play, out-of-district placements, it would be over a hundred thousand per kid. And most districts don't operate programs like that. So, um, so that's something, even though that is a, a lot of money, it's something we're trying to do. And, um, and then the other one is facilities, which last year, we kind of took some grief for not putting more into facilities because our buildings are all aging and falling apart, um, and we're doing the best we can, but it's a statewide problem. It is not just a Bonny Eagle. Eagle problem, so...
I have a question, if I may. First, for those that can't see your tie, I'd like to compliment you on your tie. Could you take just a moment to tell people what the tie is?
Um, I believe it's a Save the Children themed tie, and I think of it as sort of coming together. So I wore it for good vibes tonight, to try to work together, so...
Thank you. And, in that vein, I want to say, just, uh, I, uh, my family is from Farmington on my mother's side, and my, uh, the trivia question in Farmington for town history is, who was the coach of the, uh, uh, state championship basketball team in the nineteen twenties? What position did they hold in the, in the school district? And the answer is my grandfather, but his position was custodian, and in those days, custodians did everything. The point I want to make is, that in our school district, MSAD six, we have bus drivers, we have, uh, uh, food service workers, we have maintenance staff, we have teacher, ed techs, as well as the administrators and teachers. We have a lot of people who really commit to the care of our students. They love our kids. They put a lot of effort in their job, but it shows, I can tell you as a parent, when I was on the school board, and even now, that there are tremendous employees that we should be proud of, that, you know, when a kid goes through the lunch line, that person is serving a meal, yes, but you know, there's a lot of extra that people don't realize, that those food service workers boost their, the kids' morale. The bus drivers, each day, the bus drivers are the first ones to see the kids every day and set their mood, and see them at the end of the day. Those people do tremendous work for our students, in addition to the teachers and other administrators. And I just want to acknowledge that and thank them publicly for all that they do. Okay? In addition to that, uh, I just want to raise that, are there any court suits now? Has Fry Island kind of settled down? Are we in a quiet period with that?
We, right now, don't have any active litigation or anything pending, so, yes.
People should know that, uh, one of the benefits of having a multi-town district, because we have five towns, we are, I believe we're still the third-largest in the state in terms of school districts, more or less?
I think we are the fourth-largest school district, but I think the largest SAD.
Okay. So what that means is, we get to leverage the fact that Standish combines with the other towns. We get to leverage benefits from combining together that other towns, smaller than us, don't have. For example, are there nurses in every building?
Yes.
How many districts in the state can say that? Not a lot. That's part of the care that we have for our children. By being a multi-district town, we have a whole host of services. Yes, these cost things, but by being a multi-town district with the size, rural district, you know, we're not a, a city, but you know, if the five towns together combined, we would be roughly the fourth-largest city in the state. But we're a rural town, we have our own set of issues, but by being together, and I think that's important for people to understand, the importance of the fact that we have five rural towns that are bonded together to do a pretty darn good job in educating our children. Sure, you can do better, you can save money here and there, but by being a combined district, that's important. The, I want to say, it's important now that the state is paying for lunches and breakfasts, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, and so that makes a big district in, difference in preparing our kids for, uh, the, uh, for the day. It's also, it's, you know, they may be paying for the food, but, you know, we have to pay, hire the workers that work there. So, th- they're doing more than perhaps they did fifteen or other years ago.
Right, and can I add something, you know, on food service? There are revenues that, that come in, or reimbursements from federal government, from the state, so we have to show that amount that's actually spent, but there will be some offset to that. We just can't count on it as a revenue stream, as we're building a budget. So, to your point, that, that increase shouldn't really be actualized at that amount at the end of the year, next year, so...
So we, not only are we five towns, but we're the largest transportation system in the state.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if we're still the largest, but we're definitely one of the largest.
And we have consistently been the most efficient and effective in our transportation. We're recognized almost historically every year by having a well-run transportation system. Because we have so many miles that we have to travel by being a rural district, but we've done, done, and continue to do a pretty darn good job at administering that to the envy of many other districts, is that right?
Uh, I don't know about the envy, but I think we do a very good job, and we are one of the largest. It is, I, I want to say it's eight, we're at eight, about eight hundred and fifty thousand miles in a year, when you add up all the odometers on all the buses.
Uh, now, um, there are some old buildings, um, you know, and there are multiple dis- multiple schools in Standish. Some people suggest that maybe, you know, Steve Falls will cling to their school district, certainly, I understand that. Every town likes to have their own elementary school. But if the schools in Standish were consolidated, similar to the Buxton Center Elementary School, all of our special ed kids in Standish wouldn't need to be bused so far. Uh, that would, there would be some benefits. Are there any thoughts underway towards consolidating some older schools? I know that's a big expense.
Well, one of the things we need to see is the results of this, our applications first, like, we don't want to put, spend money on buildings until we know if we get any support. So that will be a conversation next year, because like I said, by the end of June, we should have an idea if we finished high enough with our applications to get any support. I will say that one of the things, we, um, we had site visits on all the schools, and they were very interested in some of these older, unsprinkled, wooden-structured schools, and were, had some concerns about those. And one of the approaches I've taken is, I know there's a lot of talk about consolidating Steve Falls, but you have to have a place to put them that's better, and right now, it isn't better. Edna Libby, anyone who has had kids at Edna Libby, good luck getting down the road at, in the morning or afternoon, and if we put more humans on that site, not helpful. Georgie Jack has, is probably, I think, one of the oldest schools in the district, and it, um, and we have these portables that are not really particularly, um, they're not holding up very well, they're after forty years, or whatever they've been there. So there are needs, and we'll need to plan for those needs. And I think some kind of consolidation makes a lot of sense, it's just how do we plan that?
So, part of that is, you can also apply for a community school program, where the school is not just a school, but serves the community in some other ways, and I would urge you to, as you go forward, to keep that in mind, to, uh, uh, because the school can be a greater part of the community, to serve the elderly, as well as the kids, among others. We have, uh, MSAD six, unlike many other schools, although we participate in the pathways and the, uh, uh, Westbrook Vocational Center, with students going to both those places. There are some vocational-type programs at the high school, is that still the case?
Yeah, not as much as there have been in the past, because we can't get certified teachers, and when you're at a vocational center, the, the certification requirements are relaxed. So you have a greater pool, you can have a practitioner, a plumber, and electrician can get certified to teach at Westbrook Voke, they couldn't get certified just to teach at the high school. So, the problem we have is getting the people to teach programs like that. We have some offerings, though, we definitely have some.
So you are, uh, I, the point I'm trying to make is, you're continuing to support non-collegiate or vocational-type programs strongly as you can.
We send, I think, the only school that sends more kids to Westbrook Voke is Westbrook, and then Bonny Eagle is next.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and, uh, uh, one of the things that we can, uh, look to historically is that, uh, our people costs have traditionally been below state average, and we're still at that point, is that right? So that, compared to other districts...
Yes.
That, where we gather, uh, we compete with districts in terms of teachers and, uh, teachers and towns that have a very significant, uh, income for their taxes that help support their schools. As a rural district, we don't have some of those things, but we still get a big bang for our buck by, uh, and have, uh, kept our expenses below the state average, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, that's about all I have right now, other than say, I want to thank everybody in the district, the teachers, the administrators, the custodians, the, those, uh, food service workers, uh, bus drivers, maintenance, all of those ed techs, and, uh, the people in the, in the little jobs mean a lot to the kids, and I know that they all love the kids, and I'm thankful that we have a school district that is like that, where our employees really do care about the kids. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other, yes, sir?
Uh, Clay, I just want to say that this was the most thorough presentation that you've brought forward since I've been on the council, and I really appreciate that. And I think that everybody at this table can agree that it's not easy to sit down and look at what gets onto the chopping block. Um, and so I, I thank you for at least listing out the things, you know, that were really difficult decisions for you to make, because, I mean, I think that you look at that, and it, one, it's well-rounded, you know, I mean, I think you're not just loading it on, like, one part of the population that you're serving at the schools or the other. But, you know, it's, I think, difficult to, to sit down and say, "We don't need a speech ed assistant this year," or "We don't need a social worker," or "We don't, um, need those things." And so I think that that, those were, were some difficult decisions. Um, I will just take a moment to commiserate on some parking lot maintenance with you, that's the theme of my professional life this year, and, um, you know, with the, the price of asphalt is tied with the prices of oil, and, you know, you, you kicked it down the can, kicked the can down the road, and that, I think, ends up on a lot of budgets, where paving kind of gets the, um, the cut, uh, but I, you know, I hope that, you know, we, we both come out next year, in our, in our budgets, with some lower oil prices to make that, um, to make that number not hurt in fiscal year twenty-seven, um, or anything like that. But I, I think you've done, just made some really hard decisions here, and I thank you for being very clear about what those were, and I thought you did give a wonderful presentation, that was very thorough.
Thank you. Mr. Pomelo?
Uh, I'd like to agree with Council of Gabba, this is probably the best presentation. Sixteen years, nineteen years on the council, uh, very informed, good, good budget, great job.
Mr. Gardner, you had a question?
Yes, uh, so, uh, they've all stole my thunder, uh, I just wanted to, um, say well-done on, on the, uh, the budget. I know it's hard, uh, being in education and stuff like that, and so, it's definitely not easy. But I do have a question on, on the numbers and stuff like that, and it's not a specific question, more of like, so all these numbers are based off tax-paying dollars, not like any extra money we get from state or from federal?
Correct.
Anything like that, that all gets added in later if you get approved for it?
Right, we, we budget, these are the, yes, those monies are not in this local budget, they are outside of the budget.
And when, so when do you know, like, you get those mon- that money?
Yep, um, like, I think a lot of people, we're kind of watching the way the wind's blowing, because it's hard to say, but we have been told that, uh, through, definitely through the end of this year, which is good, five weeks to go, and then we believe into the fall, that we could expect like a flat-funded budget for like title funds, let's say, which are federal funds. But beyond that, it's un- unclear.
Like, something that we would be able to see, like, how much we got for this past school year?
Um, I'm sure we could put that together, I, I know, we, we know, we can put together how much title funds, we have about two million dollars we get in federal funds, is that what you're...
I was always saying...
Yeah, Dawn, Dawn calcu- I mean, that number comes from Dawn, not from me. But it's about two, two million, so if we lost all federal funding, we'd have to make up about two million dollars, or there'd be significant layoffs.
And then you spread that money throughout, or whatever.
Right.
Because I, I just, I figured there would be money for like special programs, where we're at twenty-one percent, and the state average is like fourteen percent, if we're that much over for special ed, do we get extra, like...
There are some reimbursements in special ed that offset those special ed increases, not a hundred percent, but they, they make up some of it.
Yep.
Um, there, we used to be able to bill, like, main care for certain services, I think we still can, but that's another way, can make, uh, make some money, sort of back, revenues back. So there's different ways that it can be offset, um, but we have to go into it, no, like, if we, having to pay our, all our bills. If we had to pay our, all our bills, this is, this is what we'd need.
Perfect. Well, again, thank you, great presentation, and, and, and well-done on this.
Thanks. Appreciate that. I just want to recognize, John Sargent is here tonight, school board member from Standish, one of the Standish reps.
Hey, how's John?
So I want to thank him for coming. And I just want to recognize, you know, Dawn has really tried to, to take this process very seriously, and very transparent. Um, you know, she sat with every principal, director, manager, and looked, I analyzed their budget as they brought it forward, and we grilled people, "Do you really need it, do you really need it?" And I know we all face the same thing as public entities, like, things are costing more, we have to figure out how to pay for them without continuing to ask for more from taxpayers. So, this is sort of year one in a multi-year process of trying to keep the, the reoccurring costs lower. We'll never be able to come in with a below-zero budget, but we're going to try to continue to have that increase be minimal by trying to offset things that we don't need that are reoccurring in the budget, so...
Could I ask one last point, quickly? One of the hidden gems of the MSAD six is the fact that, uh, you have a strong student component in the school board. Uh, and, uh, in fact, not only numbers of students that have participated over the years, but two of the students have gone on to become board chairs, perhaps some of the youngest in the state. Both are working in politics, one of them is the current state representative. And I'd like to commend the district for its recognition that as it's educating the students in terms of math and literature and everything else, that you're also trying to make them good citizens and open, open those opportunities to them. And I hope that, uh, in some form, we might have public, uh, support for doing this at the school, not only in the school board, but also the town council, so the students can participate in some way in the running of their local government at the town council level, just as they're participating at the school board. Because I think it's very, a tremendous, proud thing that we've had students that have gone on to be elected as board chair, uh, not once, at least twice now, and that's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
And I'll just add, all these materials are available here, we'll leave the extras, and I have left business cards, if anyone wants to contact me directly, and anyone should reach out to Dawn or I, if you have any questions about any of this, anyone watching at home, we're here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Just real quick, I'm on this last part.
I'm after you.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And I'd like about thirty minutes.
As you, as you deserve it. On the unfunded needs, though, that's the only part, like, as a, you know, a graduate of Bonny Eagle and stuff, and, and I coach there, and, um, sub, and do a lot of things, the building is almost the same, a lot of these facilities are the same, w- w- I mean, what is it going to take to actually add these into the budget for you to, I mean, I add it up, it's one point five mil. Is that more federal funding, is that more, uh, state funding, is that more taxpayer dollars?
Right.
We got to do some of these things, I mean, to leave them off is kind of, not criminal on your end, but the kind of criminal, you know, it's like, jeez, we got to get these things done, so...
I don't have a great answer, other than, I know for like playgrounds, the principals are all looking for grant opportunities. Um, there are organizations that, that will fund things, but playgrounds are super expensive. Um, so I think that's, that's one thought that comes to mind, we're always looking for grants for like, um, safety upgrades and things, and trying to pursue those, but they're pretty competitive, because other districts, you know, are after them, too. So I, I don't have a great answer, other than as we are looking at doing renovations to a site, maybe that's the time we build that in. If we're going to have to do something to Georgie Jack to be able to make it a bigger site for more kids, to consolidate, then we do the parking lot and do it all in one swoop, and maybe we're looking at bonding things, or taking it in big chunks. Someone had given us, well, another thing I wanted to mention is, um, you know, people said, "Probably twelve percent increase in health insurance in two years, are you looking somewhere else?" And we are going to be looking to see if there's, we can do better, but what I've heard is, that's pretty standard across the industry, is that people are hitting fourteen, fifteen, twenty percent increases. But, you know, there were talk, there was talk about, like, can you do chunks of work But, you know, there were talk, there was talk about, like, can you do chunks of work at a site out of capital improvement? Sort of build in some money into the budget, set it aside, and after four or five years have enough to do something significant, and then you're not paying interest by bonding, right? So we're gonna try to be as creative as we can, however we can, but I don't know, John, cause I have the same feeling. I look at this and I just, like, I can't go ask people for one point five million dollars more, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Christie?
Great presentation. I have a cold and I'm gonna be to the point. Former teacher, former principal, former superintendent of schools. You had a good presentation tonight and it brings back things to me, and you're trying to do it. And you're gonna go through it, but tonight your presentation was the one that was very good and, uh, brought back good memories to myself. And we, we got a lot of products, you'll see this, uh, the newspaper in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
No other petitions and communications this evening? We'll go to the town manager report.
She has nothing to say.
Oh, nice try. Fire and rescue, uh, this is a great savings. So we use message boards all the time for our projects. In the past, we've rented them, uh, for two, two thousand five hundred dollars a month. The chief was able to go to an auction and buy two of them for just under twenty-five hundred. So a humongous savings there. Thank you to him for keeping his eye open. Fire is still understaffed, uh, so we are looking for that. And we, uh, upgrades to the boat launch as we speak, we received a grant to put some new cement blocks down. And so that's getting done now. And HRGA CMP is now able to shut power off because the winter's over, so we've had some more requests for that. Also because of the new law of you have to have the real ID or passports, uh, those requests are also way up. Everyone mark your calendars, Mary Retirement Party will be six twenty-five, uh, from two to five P.M. She's clapping. Uh, Public Works, we're, um, working with the temporary new transfer station hours and the stickers will be sold, are being sold, will be sold.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth. And Glidden is starting to do some paving. Parks and Rec Memorial Day weekend, the beach will be open, those stickers are available. And mark your calendars, Standish Spectacular Saturday, August second. And Finance, very busy, uh, we have monthly reports, uh, new hire for treasurer, and we have new photocopiers in town, so that's been keeping him busy. We, uh, the clerk's office absentee ballots are available and town hall will be closed that day, so staff give assistance with voting. And code, we had eighty-six, or right now eighty-six permits of how to where we were at last year. And we are getting some impact fees, I do not have that number, I can get it. Assessing, working through assessments, and they've done thus far three hundred and ten inspections at properties. And planning, Zach is looking, uh, he took a leadership class, it was, uh, free, uh, through the county. He's finishing the, uh, comprehensive plan and they are working on beach and gravel pit inspections. And, um, as Clay had said, we work together a lot. We, the town, uh, put together, and this is a long time in coming, the school zone lights. And so we're happy to say today we, uh, got word that they're in. So John and his crew are going up to Augusta and we're gonna get them. So every single elementary school in this town will have the blinking lights instead of trying to read a little bitty sign. But they'll all have that. We did, um, also get approved for one for the high school and the middle school. And we filled out the grant for Buxton, so, uh, we're working with the town of Buxton, Public Works to put that in for there. So very excited about that, huge savings and safety, so checks all the boxes. Um, and we're, Portland Water Districts have been having some issues with their equipment, and we've been working together closely to get the word out, and Poland Spring did donate some water, so. Any questions, Sol, I have?
Thank you. Great, public hearings this evening?
Uh, yes, so first up is, uh, we're gonna go over the June ten, twenty twenty-five municipal ballot referendum questions. And attached is the public notice from the shopping guide. I can read that if you would like, or...
Thinking to read it, is there any questions or any comments from the public about the referendum questions?
Up next is fifty-one dash twenty-five, application submitted by Spencer Mackin, uh, doing business as On the Rocks Bar Company LLC located at sixty-four Bonnie Eagle Pond Road for a new on-premises beer, wine, and spirits Class A restaurant license. Order that the application submitted by Spencer Mackin doing business, uh, as On the Rocks Bar Company LLC located at sixty-four Bonnie Eagle Pond Road, a new on-premises beer, wine, and spirits qualified catering service license is approved by council to expire as determined by Department of Public Safety.
Is there anybody here from On the Rocks?
Hi, everyone, how we doing?
Good, how you doing, sir?
Good, um, I'm Spencer Mackin, um, I reside at sixty-four Bonnie Eagle Pond Road. Um, to kinda clarify a little bit, it does say on-premise. Um, essentially what I'm trying to accomplish here is a bar service for mostly weddings, um, some corporate events. Um, in the state of Maine, if you're unaware, um, you do have to serve food, you do have to have a brick and mortar location in order to serve alcohol. So what I have been doing is, uh, I built a commercial kitchen in my basement. But basically, um, no, uh, serving of alcohol or food will actually be at my residence. Um, this is all off-premise, um, you know, at events, at weddings. They hire me, I go to any venue in, in Maine per se, um, and offer, you know, beer, wine, cocktails, et cetera.
Questions?
Awesome, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
I was looking for my question. So when it says what will be your business hours, that means business hours off-site?
Uh, business hours more so, um, what I included was more like taking phone calls, taking emails, office hours essentially. Hours typically range from like three to eleven, your typical wedding. Um, and that's including breakdown, um, serving alcohol. Typically, you try not to go over five hours. That five hour limit is, is good. Anything over that, you kinda get into murky water, so try and keep it, uh, kosher.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, any other, any other questions? We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
All right, seven yeses. And then we have fifty-two dash twenty-five, application submitted by Acres of Wildlife Ca- Campground, Inc. Doing business as Acres of Wildlife Campground located at sixty Acres of Wildlife Road for renewal of, um, an on-premise, on-premises beer, wine, and spirits Class A restaurant license. Order that the application submitted by Acres of Wildlife Ca- Campground, Inc. Doing business as Acres of Wildlife Campground located at sixty Acres of Wildlife Road for renewal of an on-premises beer, wine, and spirits Class A restaurant license is approved by council to expire as determined by the Department of Public Safety.
Okay, is there anybody here from Acres of Wildlife? I don't think so. Any questions for, from the council?
I don't know, I read that menu and I'm getting hungry. I, I'm not sure if we can go in from the public and eat in there, but man, they got seafood platters for like seventeen dollars. It's like, wow, I didn't know they had that much food in there.
I didn't want either.
Then if there's no questions or comments, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. Next public hearing is twenty-one dash twenty-five, amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one Land Use, Form-Based Code Village Districts, On Street Parking. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-one Land Use Form-Based Code Village Districts On Street Parking of the Standish Town Code be and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out.
Make a motion that we waive the reading?
Yes.
All favor of waiving the reading? That's unanimous. This is to take off, out On Street Parking, uh, Mr. Cross, anything to add on or clarify?
No, it'll still be allowed on Town Avenue.
Town Avenue, right. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Where'd John say? I didn't hear John.
Did you repeat yourself, John?
It'll still be allowed on Town Avenue, so basically for commercial type develop, uh, development areas.
Thank you.
No other questions, uh, roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. And now we have twenty-two dash twenty-five, amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one Land Use Part One, Zoning Part Three Subdivision Part Six Growth Management. Uh, there's housekeeping in several sections. The town of Standish hereby...
Make a motion to waive the reading?
All favor of waiving the reading? This is unanimous. Uh, this is to add, uh, a few things to growth areas and take out some other things that didn't need to be there. All typically housekeeping stuff, any questions or anything? Questions? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yep.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Uh, committee reports, and it's, uh, down here with...
I think I'm good.
Mr. Christie?
I'm dandy.
Okay, Mr. Gardner?
Personnel committee did not meet, um... And so... Yeah, we're all set.
Very good. Um, we have ordinance committee coming up, uh, meeting next week.
Finance committee met yesterday, um, everything, we're in the, just about to head into the last, uh, quarter of the, of the budget, and everything's coming in really, really good. We're underspending and over-collecting, and so we'll meet in the middle, I think, nicely with all of that. So I think Scott is doing a great job over there.
Ms. Thomas?
Economic Com- Development Committee did not meet last week.
And Mr. Deacon?
I think nothing to report, great.
I have one more to add. Yeah, I was kinda having a brain cramp there. Uh, appointments committee met before tonight. We did do, uh, four interviews for open positions. Uh, we've made some decisions, but those won't be coming forward until June, so more to come.
Thank you, John. Uh, consent calendar.
Uh, there are no items on the consent calendar.
Then let's go to unfinished business.
We have one thirty-four dash twenty-four, amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-seven, licenses and permits. This is the first reading with the substitute. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-seven, licenses and permits, Section one eighty-seven of the Standish...
Motion to waive reading?
All favor of waiving the reading? Unanimous? Uh, again, this is, uh, some old things that were just taken out that were no longer needed, uh, because it's just old language, uh, such as coin-operated devices that aren't even, they're state, on a state level now. So there's, there's housekeeping stuff to keep our codes current with what needs to be in here. Any questions? Yes.
I just wanted to highlight that we are, um, making it easier to renew liquor licenses for businesses that don't have any problems.
It's a great, great clarification, thank you, Jen. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. And then forty-one dash twenty-five, amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-eight, Massage Establishments and Therapists. This is the first reading. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-eight, Massage Establishments and Therapists of the Standish Town Code be and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions...
Make a motion to waive the reading?
All in favor of waiving the reading is unanimous. Again, this is just taking out some language about criminal history stuff that doesn't, no longer need to be in there for licensing. Uh, any questions? Yes.
I just wanna say that this is really long overdue, um, and so I appreciate that the committee pushed this forward. This is a very ancient expectation for massage parlors.
Lots of stuff that's ancient in there, and hopefully we can continue cleaning it up in the future. Um, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Hey, new business.
Fifty-three dash twenty-five, authorized finance director to issue municipal quick claim deed to...
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading?
Okay, all favor of waiving the reading? It's unanimous. Uh, thank you, and Ms. Gaba, would you like to talk about this?
It's just to issue a quick claim deed, which is a good thing, and so we would just like to move forward to do that.
Any questions? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. And fifty-four dash twenty-five, change the date of the regular town council meeting in June to June third, twenty twenty-five. Uh, whereas the regular meeting of the Standish...
Motion to waive reading?
Second.
All favor of waiving the reading?
I'd re, um, I'd like to have it read for the public because where it's gonna be a changed, changed date for the meeting.
Yeah, whereas the regular meeting of the Standish Town Council in June is scheduled to be held on June ten, twenty twenty-five, which is the same day as Election Day. And whereas the council rules of procedure allow for the date of the meeting to be changed upon the vote of the council, now be it ordered, that the regular meeting of the Standish Town Council be changed to Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six P.M., so as not to conflict with the polling hours on Election Day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the change?
I can't make it.
Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Maybe.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. And last up under new business is fifty-five dash twenty-five, award RFP and authorize contract for legal...
Make a motion to amend the order as written, um, and to add, um, for, from the, the legal services to add the name of Drummond and Woodsum, um, and under the cost, uh, to include the vendor stated amount in proposal, in the, in the proposal.
I'll second that. All in favor of the amendment? I think, Mr. Christie, your hand up, I can't see you.
Your hand, we're amending the order here. I have your hand up.
Yes, that's unanimous, thank you. Uh, any discussion on this?
I'll just say that, uh, Drummond is, is principally the, uh, the big guy in town all over the state. Most, most towns and school districts work with them. There are other law firms, and, uh, just to keep them on their toes, we ought to, uh, reach out or, uh, maybe with the, uh, Maine Municipal Association, identify other law districts that might wanna give us presentations.
We already did that. I, I personally called and emailed several, and we put an RFP out to all of them. But we did, and we, we received two.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Of course.
I appreciate that you're on top of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Christie's lawyer personal is on...
I don't think that'd be a conflict of interest, I don't see.
Just gonna do that. That's embedded, I wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Are you asking to recuse yourself, or you just?
I'll recuse myself.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then let's have a roll call, please. On the amended order, order is amended.
Okay, and then, um, Christie? Abstained? Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
That's six yeses, one abstained.
And that's all the new business, so this is now time for public items or public comments.
Hi, my name is Tina Finley.
Come right up to the mic, please, so everybody can hear you.
I'm standing in proxy for my son Christopher Finley. He has sent me a statement to please read to the council. And, uh, the statement is from Christopher Finley, candidate for town council. As a small business owner, community member, and candidate for town council, I, Christopher Finley, I'm his mother, I'm saying that for him, placed legally permitted campaign signs at the corner, Roots twenty-five and thirty-five. These signs were posted in full compliance with all local rules and regulations as they have been in other areas of town. On May 8, I received a call and a text from one of my employees informing me that a woman was actively removing my campaign signs from that location. My worker also provided photographic evidence of the individual in the act. The person identified was Maria, who was employed by a local law office. I immediately contacted the town clerk to report the incident. She advised me that the town does not handle such matters directly, and that they fall under the jurisdiction of the sheriff's office. She attempted to contact a deputy, but when none were available, I was instructed to contact the sheriff's office myself. After doing so, I submitted the necessary complaint and evidence to the responding officer. The deputy followed up and discovered that Maria had been instructed by her employer, an attorney and sitting town counselor affiliated with the opposing political party, to remove the signs. When asked if I wished to proceed with charges, I affirmed. Maria was subsequently charged with the unlawful removal of political signage from a public right of way. It is my strong personal and professional opinion that this action was not only inappropriate, but deeply unethical. The fact that a sitting town counselor, a legal professional, fully aware of the laws governing political signage, instructed a subordinate to break those laws is unacceptable. This behavior violates the ethical standards we expect from our public officials. Town counselors must be held to the highest standards of conduct. Deliberate interference with a, excuse me, deliberate interference with a political opponent's campaign undermines the democratic process and violates public trust. I believe this counselor's actions warrant a serious review and potential removal from office in accordance with the town's code of conducts and ethics. I remain committed to running a fair, transparent, and lawful campaign and to serving this community with integrity. Sincerely, Christopher Finley, candidate for town council. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments, or Mr. Farley, come on up.
O.G.s are here. I got a couple of things.
State your name.
I was wondering about Elmer Farley, a resident. About, I've been concerned about this cluster housing. And there's like 500 cluster housing, and they're probably 100 to 50 feet apart. And we have a apartment complex going in, and they all have fire.
Sprinklers?
Yes. And if those houses are that close apart, why wouldn't they do that with cluster housing? That's just a question. And then I have one more thing. Here we are, we have two harbor masters in Sebagala Station down here. They should be used. They went to school for it. We've got more moorings out there, and most people don't even know who they... I just found mine. Been there for three years. Somebody had moved it. And my boat wasn't on it, so I know it. They moved it. But there's nobody, no rules in the harbor. There's all kinds of moorings, and no one, that should be up to the harbor masters.
Mr. Farley, the state was gonna pass some legislation about the moorings, and they've paused it. And so we are having meetings right now about that. We're meeting internally, and we are gonna set forth some of our surrounding towns. I think Raymond has a good policy, or I forget which town it is, but we are working on that actively because the Warden Service is gonna enforce the mooring law this year, so...
It really should.
Yep, we are on top of it. We're trying, we're working through it right now. We had paused it, because like I said, we were told it wasn't gonna come up, and for some reason, that changed. So we are working on that.
And I had one more thing, but that concerned the water district, so it'd take me all day. They're never gonna let me talk long enough. And I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Farley.
Thank you.
Any other public items this evening? Okay, there is no executive session, so if somebody would like to make a motion...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Okay. Thank you.